I'll be in the top room, all right? Great to have you here today. This meeting is a discussion.
Yeah, just say like, welcome to the...
Welcome to the Rachel and Patti and Lisa Commission Thursday, July 22nd, 2024. And I'm about to do a roll call.
Call, we're being ordered now.
I'll call me. Call me, please, please, order. And at your roll call.
Oh, add, and it's a...
Oh, again, add.
But, like the actual time.
By three, two. Yeah, can I do a roll call? Okay. And, Tanya, August.
So we'll do the roll call with all the commissioners. So we'll start with the people online, it should be easier that way. So go ahead. Commissioner, I'm Ray Mondo. Just say your name for the record.
Louie Raymundo.
Okay, next on the online. Thank you, okay, the next one online.
Commissioner Julia Summerfield here.
Thank you, then we'll go to the commissioner of the room.
Heather Screefella.
Commissioner Katie Durete.
Commissioner Deitria Taylor.
Commissioner Jason Lesa.
Commissioner Tanya Hopkins.
Commissioner Jason Helsa.
And then we will go to the staff in the room. Michelle, we need impact manager, Salt Lake City Mayor's Office.
Ray O'Carroll, Detective Assistant.
Hassan, Police and Council Office.
Aaron Menenhall, Mayor's Office.
Danny Joy, Chief in that department. And the right equipment, chief, please. Mike Brown, chief, please.
Yes, if you want to really get moving, others. Do you want to introduce yourself by name?
Sure, I mean, other victims, civilian before.
Oh, sorry. Open dialogue. During this portion of the meeting, commissioners may raise topics and discuss current events that may impact or influence the commission's overall work. Discussions and deliberations to provide recommendations to the mayor and the city council regarding the Salt Lake City Police Department's policies, budgets, and culture. Actually, in the section of the meeting, matters discussed during this session of the meeting may be scheduled on a subsequent agenda for a follow-up.
Uh, it's a commission, it's a team, on stuff, and it's a...
Oh, um, Commissioner Setini? See ya.
Commissioner Setini, can you go ahead and say your name for the record, please?
Michelle, yeah?
Okay.
Okay, for the record, Commissioner Setini has entered the room. You can go over.
So did we have any open dialogue for the questions?
Yeah, not really a question, I just want to say I attended the, was it the Latino Coalition meeting last night? The Salt Lake City Police Department, and spent the entire time last week doing, uh, I don't know, started to say, from a special investigation unit. And I had some visiting experts interested in what happens on vice issues. Because two of my friends, my regular E-Captain, that's seventeen years ago now, were recruited straight E-Captain into vice. So I'm kind of seeing how it works a little bit, and I think that there's a lot of intersection between what they do and what we see going on the West Side. Like increase in prostitution, drug use, the, the, just basically everything falls under umbrella of vice. And just want to acknowledge they're doing a lot of hard work. And as the police department starts to give back up the capacity, we'd like to see if they could use more resources to go there, when we see some of those public business crimes, people maybe on the West Side, all part of all the increases in, um, social equity and prostitution and, uh, drug use. Anyway, just want to give my experience from the West Side.
Can I ask you, what was your perception of the talk of the conversation there?
Oh, very, very valuable. The attendance was bad, but I get the impression it's because of the time of year. There were only four or five people present, but it was encouraging enough of the discussion that we wanted to have the same community back to speed for a special, and from your third, you're presenting. Commissioner, just to add, thank you for your comments, thanks for attending. That's a great group, and we've been here for many, many years. Very valued community in the city. We are, let me say, getting back to staffing, we're starting to touch that threshold where we, we're going to talk a little more about that. We will be adding officers to some of these specialty groups to include that discipline that you're talking about. Excellent, I think a lot of the property crimes and stuff that happens in our neighborhoods can drive us from the past, so.
Anybody else? Okay. We'll go to a public comment. A to these may be providing one or two minutes of time to turn by the number of to these at the time available to turn by permission. Please observe the time limit stated at the beginning of the public comment period. Or, um, sorry, I may not have. So, two, I'll see you. I don't want to be back in the seat or have questions. Okay. I would like to approve, approve it and drop the minutes. For May, three, May, and May, June, May, May, three, four.
I make a motion to be put in minutes for May, maybe.
A second. May, um...
All here.
All on paper. Do you post? He's excuse me, please. Can I interrupt it? Okay, can we have, have a seat? Okay, so... I, the means, first, there is another question. The minutes have been a few in the past. I don't know how to answer this.
We're just going to send out some of the messages from commissioners online for the members there, because this room just had the reading back. No, when you're speaking, make sure the light is green, and please talk directly into the mic and leave aside our conversation, so that online can hear and take part in the conversation. Thank you. And I think you want to, I'll, if we, the commissioners online for the record.
Oh, Olivia. Commissioner Olivia?
Hi, hello, yeah, Commissioner Olivia here.
Hi, okay, we are down as a to me.
And Commissioner Obi Awadarama also entered the space, and Commissioner Speed Power is also entered the space. Okay.
So Commissioner Carter?
Uh, hey, Master. Yeah, this is me, I'm on my way. I had a child and family team meeting that started at five, so I really apologize. And they took a little longer, and so I, so I jumped in the car as soon as I could, and I'm on my way.
Okay, please.
Drive safely.
Okay.
Commissioner Karama? Karama?
Just go ahead and say your name for the record.
Just say your name first, please.
May, Obi Awadarama. Hello, everybody.
Okay, next, Commissioner Mary Nihal.
Hi. I feel like waiting while I lose stuff is, it's a lot of pressure. I'm gonna, um, we have council staff person here, and what this makes me think of, I was on the council for a long time, a little while, six years, and they, council staff would make up scripts for whoever, they still do it, for whoever's running a meeting. And I, if we could ask, um, gracefully for the council to perhaps share some meeting script formats, I think that would be helpful for us to help, you know, as commissioners are volunteering here. Could you do that, can I ask that? Okay. How would it be as easy as possible for you to be having a council here? Thank you for being here, thank you for volunteering your time, thanks for showing up from the civilian board as well, and your human rights commission members with, well, you're not, just keeps volunteering. Um, thanks, Libra, my voters, for being here too. I, most of you, I don't know, I think, so I feel like allow me to introduce myself a little bit. Um, I came to this work because I was frustrated, disappointed, and mentally pissed off. And that was almost twenty years ago, when I became really upset about the lack of progress that our state was making around air quality, and the disproportionate impacts that it makes from an environmental justice perspective. And I didn't think enough was being done, none of it was. And I didn't know anything necessarily about air quality science, or even community organizing. What I threw myself into as an activist, and I loved being an activist. I did that for a few years, and I did it with Utah Oxford, being Air First, and I was their first employee, and I would organize protests, I would also go in and do some education in classrooms, and at schools, and with upper education, upper levels of education. And I loved the momentum building of doing that kind of activist work. After a few years, I realized that I wanted to be inside of the rooms that I was outside protesting in. I wanted to be at the table, and so, fast forward, I co-founded a nonprofit called Breathe Utah that's still doing this sort of middle-of-the-road policy advocacy work. And I say the middle of the room, because it couldn't be that space that the room wouldn't exist without protest. And that ability to exercise our first amendment rights often clears the way in bureaucracy and institutions for the kind of change that's been needed all along. And I, I had a great time being tiny part of building some of that space for air quality in our legislature, in corporate level, while Salt Lake City's been on that wagon for a long time. Um, and in the same vein, I saw the opportunity to make space at the table inside of City Hall for conversations, mostly though, change in the form of policy and money around policing in Salt Lake City after George Floyd was murdered. And friends of mine, like Tanya and Franz Davis, and Andrew Powell, and some of the other original commission members, commissioners, said, we, we need this conversation, we want to put the time in, we want to unpack this with you. And that's how this commission came to be. There will never be a time, I'm sorry to say, where we don't need this commission. The, it's not baggage, it's the foundation of government and the structures in the United States of America that we need to reexamine. So this isn't stuff we picked up along the way, it's the way we grew, it's the way the country was fatted to an extent. And therefore, we can't undo this work, or we can't right the ship in a couple of years or several years. This is work that is going to have to take place in perpetuity. And it's my hope for this commission, that no matter what our legislature says, we can't say, or can't name ourselves, or the way we can't describe our work, that we find ways to make progress, that we learn from tragedies as they happen, and accidents as they happen, and that we create this space for you. It's not the most comfortable table to have a conversation over, I'm sorry, it's moving in the acoustics in here, terrible. But we want to literally make a space for you to ask every question that you have, how we can do better. It's my hope of this commission, that you are empowered with access and information to help shape this government, yes, through policing, but through any other means you can, to be more just and equitable. I think we've made some great progress because of your work over the years. And chief and deputy chief have a lot of details and statistics, but I've watched other cities who found themselves in very similar situations to the way we were in 2020, 21, with, um, within depart, I'll speak within departments, we had many, many officers leaving, basically an exodus of a good portion of our population of officers. We had a chasm of trust between some parts of our community that expanded to other parts of the community, and policing in general. And we had a spike in crime, we had a rise in crime, both violent and property crimes. And I've watched over these years of your work, our police department's work, to not go back to what we were before, uh, May of 2020, but move in a different way and forward. And right now, we are nearly full on our staff in our police department. Crime is down fifteen percent citywide, it's down twelve percent through violent crime, and in total, we have the fewest number of crime, uh, cases, total cases that we've had in over a decade. How is this happening? Let's talk about that if you want to, and let's get into some of the strategies, but you created some of these strategies, which is our civilians in the police department, which now we have sixteen?
Eighteen.
Eighteen on staff, we'll see, I hope you've seen their vehicles, or them working out there, community responders, that was you. Our community-based training, we can talk about that tonight too, that came from this board and this commission. Different means of supporting community and officers. And one of the, one of the things that this board stood up on really rather quickly was that we hadn't paid our officers very well in thirty years, since the D-D quarter D-B administration, we hadn't led the state as a police department in officer pay, and we'd slipped to in the twenties for pay for injured officers. So the questions, nobody could scratch their head about all the myriad of reasons we couldn't hold on to our officers. And when we had a commission saying, we need the best officers, this commission backed that up by supporting our pay increase back in 21, it was a 21 chief, August of 21. And that was a bold move, that was a bold move by this commission. So there's, you, you produced a lot of important work for us to take on, and I know that I can't speak for the city council, but you have their support through their saying yes from a budget perspective and a policy perspective, so. I, I am here to answer whatever question I can that you have, and if I don't have an answer, I know Damian or Deputy Chief, Chief Brownell, help me, or we can get back to you. You can ask me anything.
Mayor, I, I'm Deitria.
How do you say?
Um, I'm new to something, say one, and it goes to the commission, and I asked with a question yesterday to Michelle, for you, I don't know if you've seen it.
I didn't see the questions, but I didn't think you wanted me to just...
Oh, yeah, no, no, that's fine. Oh, you're right, like I did. Okay, good, okay. So my question to you, because I'm so new to the work of the commission, I've read the reports, I've seen a bit of its history, and what it's worked on, and, you know, one being a black American, you know, learning about the anti-DBI legislation, I have my own, like, fears in the back of my mind, like, well, will this commission pass? So what, what it brought with me was, well, for some reason, this mayor wanted this commission to exist. I wonder what happened in her life, right, or past, if there was any event, like changing moment, some altering event for you personally, that, like, you were speaking about the air quality, that was one, but there was, is there anything along the lines of either race or policing that also motivated you? Not, not just George Floyd, because that was kind of an event that happened in one place, it was broadcast. I'm talking about you specifically, there was just many things that inspired or motivated you to say, yeah, okay, George Floyd, that's it, now I need to make something happen, but something has had to happen before George Floyd.
Yeah, injustice is a bond, and in cities, it's experience, so recognizing my privilege as a white woman growing up in a fairly lower, middle-class family, I could tell you my stories, I'll give you one. Okay. That is not policing-related, but motivated, for sure, my eventual interest in air quality, which is that my daddy was born in nineteen thirty-three in Illinois, and would tell us stories about how they'd hear the airplanes coming to do the crop dusting, and he would, he and his sister would run out so they could be covered like snow by a DDT. And this is, this was a joyful memory from his childhood. And then I turned, around the time I turned seven years old, he was diagnosed with non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. He lived until I was thirteen, and it wasn't until I was in college at the U and studying biology, that class, I had to read a book for a class, and the book was called Living Downstream, and through a bio woman, Sandra Steinreber, she happened to grow up in the same county as my dad, she's the next younger generation, but she got cancer, blackened cancer at a young age. She's a scientist, just thought it was weird, started doing research, and ultimately, this book talks about how my dad's generation had this disproportionate impact of prostate, uh, non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. And it was like finding like this hidden diary of my family, like, oh my God, maybe my dad, maybe I'm not just kind of half cursed with cancer at a young age based on my DNA, but maybe my dad's environmental exposure had a big impact on how young he was to get cancer, and the fact that so many other people who grew up there did too. The, the reason for that, and, you know, if you have a part of the history in the shell, the United States is a war, we need to start producing way more food much faster, stateside. And they quickly approve chemicals that help our crops to do better and put out our product. They do it without doing much research on the long-term health impacts, and ultimately, DDT's pulled off the market, everybody knows what it does, but in the meantime, a lot of families had empty seats around the dinner table. And I became pretty fascinated, is a cool term for it, I became passionate about it, really interested in this intersection between government saying this is worth it, and the impacts on communities and families. And I felt a similar, as I became a gender studies major, you dig into a lot of injustice and that work, I went to do for my, for my bachelor's and my master's, and just moving into this community from the suburbs, where I feel like Salt Lake City is a magnet for people who want to be their authentic selves in this region, in this area. I wanted to be around people who had different experiences from me, and that's the kind of community I got from the time I moved here at EQ. So I can't say it's just my experiences that come 2020, when there is no one in this building who can say that we don't have space to unpack the budget, the policies, and the culture of our police department. There, the time and opportunity had never been more blatantly apparent. I'm sorry we didn't do it before, but I can't, I can't say that my experience equates to your experiences or the historic atrocities in this country, but I, I have some sense of what injustice feels like from government decisions and actions, and I've never talked about that, so thank you for asking.
Yeah, I appreciate that nice sentence, that you, you experienced what injustice feels like, that's pretty much all we need to hear. Thank you.
There's other stories, but we have to have a beer.
Yeah. I love it.
So I did not submit this question, I did not submit this question, because it's kind of developed over the last few hours, so bear with me for a moment. I have said for a long time that what Salt Lake City did in the George Floyd protest, slash, he right, was far better response than the whole city and the city in our size, that way, the restriction, where our police department handled things with, uh, implementing the isolation tactics of giving space for the protesters was good. And then coming from that was the creation of this commission, which has had a lot of good work in, with partners, including the Salt Lake City Police Department, on implementing the isolation tactics, on implementing, uh, health awareness and training, all of these components we've done. However, we've seen recently, with protests at the university, with, was kind of going on right now, the, the new redevelopment area for the West Side over by there, with baseball stadium to go, and multi- jurisdictional, multi-agency, uh, operations taking place, so Salt Lake City may not, Salt Lake City is not necessarily called a shot. So my concern, that I can address is, what happens when incorporating other agencies that don't have that same code, that, for that same commitment to the same values of, uh, what Salt Lake City is, what Salt Lake, uh, I'm concerned that there are ones that ask for that to be placed, if we, uh, if we, like, take a backseat to the stage, or to, just whoever's involved doesn't have our standing, so. I hope that makes sense.
It's, it's a great question, and there was another question on the sheet, Michelle shared about the University of Utah Department, so it's, it's kind of, I don't know. The, the more different, well, let me just invite chief to correct me, but our police department, our officers go through both training, as you know, and then we do more training on top of that. And that's, that additional training segment, the more different it becomes from whatever other department is doing, and some of them may have their own unique training conditions as well, but they definitely don't call us up every week and say, once new training that you're doing, and how can we be aligned with you? The more different we become in that area, the harder it is when we have inter-agency support happening, and yet, inter-agency support is really, really important, we're never not going to give inter-agency support when the university, or Department of Public Safety, or we, or any other department calls us up. And what happened on that night, on May thirtieth, in 2021... And what happened on that night, on May thirtieth in twenty twenty-one, was inter-agency assist. We were in the lead. What happened at the University of Utah was inter-agency assist, but the U was in the lead. And I think that there's been some legislative opportunities, mostly in twenty twenty-one, to try to update policing from a statewide policy level. In my opinion, it didn't get much traction. But Chief, I think maybe if you could speak to how do we, how do we handle the difference between how one agency may act when we're doing this assist? Even if it's in our city, but not in our jurisdiction, like at the Capitol or at the University of Utah?
Yeah, no, thank you, Mayor. You're absolutely right, though. It comes down to training. It is nothing very good question, but twenty twenty taught a lot of lessons. We learned a lot. We listened to a lot. And we took the proper steps to train our officers to the level that we felt was very professional and that we could deal with these situations. But we also talked with different agencies across the valley, because the mayor's talking about mutual aid. If we need help, we call. If they need help, they'll call. And it's, it's backed by statute and policies. But when you all speak the same language and you train together and you have that professional bar set at the level that we all accept, you get a better product. I mean, Captain Nelson is with the University of Utah. We train with their team, we train with Unified, we train with UHP. So it really comes down to understanding what we're doing and training to the level that we expect.
Is it fair, Captain, you don't have to respond, but I'm curious, that departments don't want to have big contrast between their behaviors when they're working in uncoordinated fashion?
Well, you, you don't have time for too very big contrast. No. May of twenty twenty, we didn't have time. We put out the call and agencies, they came and we agreed what they came. But mutual aid is really an agreement between cities and the cities. Public safety is a big part of that, but when we have earthquakes, floods.
Fires.
Fires. An android alert, a child was missing, the debate, so I mean, it goes on and on and on. We need help, they will come. And like I said, the U has been a good partner. When they need help with the debate, it was supposed to be the University of Utah, but we had a big lift to that, so did UHP. And we come with our expertise and our staffing and we support each other pretty well. And I guess that not only is it training, it's similar when you train together, but we also have policies that come close to each other. We have a set policy, and it's like she does. That is probably kind of vital, so the agencies have kept holding to our less hold. So our, our policy light up pretty well. I can't give the details about the decision process, University, because I was not in that room. I was at a different room and I was outside. But I think, what I can say, I think, we support from my part is we don't look forward to those things, we don't look forward to taking those actions. It's not what we want to do, it's not what we're out. And I don't want to get into the politics of it, but it is something that we should be honest. Because we're, we're at a strange place now in this country. And firstly, I, I started to wonder, what does the police do by next year? Right? What was coming out of the legislature was the police do by next year, a year after that. But I think for now, I think we're aligned with that. We make the best decisions we can, we do the best training we can, we train craft with as policies we can. And then we go off, we're accountable, but they violate the policies, they violate the trust. Or a small agency, or a state, we do full argument, which happens anyways.
So if we go back to for a moment, but it's not an emergency situation, like having to respond quickly, like what's going on with the policing law, Trail, Folsom Trail, the law agency and attempt to track down drug dealing and drug use there. What kind of dialogue is placed where you coordinate, but I believe the state is seeking some, some weakness on these issues. And I, I, I know that there's also a form of shooting, what area is at that DNR? They're very much involved in that process. So how does that kind of discussion and cooperation take place when you have that kind of areas that has to support?
Let me mention first that JRT, Journal of Trail, is really unique because of the land ownership overlay. And you can imagine pretty much everything north of North Hill, throughout the fair park, the state owned, then there's county owned, there's city or owned, there's some city owned. And so we actually have to work together, only the Journal in particular, because of the jurisdictional overlays. That's why that one is not necessarily mutually, but maybe there's some additional immunity that comes in shape?
Yeah, no, I, Commissioner, sorry. That's a great, I mean, that's a great question, but that's an ongoing, I would actually say that's mutually. We're all coming to tackle a problem. It's not an emergency, but it's a problem that we all have to stake in. So the mayor's right, we're talking UHP, ABMP, Salt Lake City, the Health Department, corrections, pre-trial, the county, the jails. We, we need, we've been meeting since October twelfth. We've taken one week off, the week between Christmas and Thanksgiving, so. But we've worked very hard with our partners. And what you're seeing now is the fruits that they were supposed to be, and it's coming together. You're seeing fencing, you're seeing the city, different departments in the city come together, because that's a big lift and everybody has to stake in it, just like Mayor. That is, that is truly mutually, because nobody billing each other. We're, we're coming together as, as law enforcement and state local partners to address a community problem.
What else?
So we, oh, sorry. So we have the process of changing our name. I'm going to get it. So the burn ratio, we were discussing in our retreat, and that's where we changed that book, the ratio there, because I thought most would happen up on the hill. But if you go, they're going to keep these racial. Do you have any idea?
I'm sorry. And speaking to.
I'm not in a company.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Let's speak to you. I think I don't want you to go beyond, there's some institutions in the city that have gone beyond requirements of elimination of names or even programs. And let us get there when the Americans get there. I just, you know, I tell you, here's a dumb analogy. My son had hair down to the low back for his whole life. And then he was going to go to Catholic school, and he was like, you have to cut your hair off. And he said, how short, how long are you? And he, he didn't just, he acted as well as he possibly could. You know what I mean? But that's up to you all.
No, I think that answers, I think that answers your question, the ratios.
His beautiful friends sent us the commission formally on this.
That's hilarious. Anybody have a comment? We're Katie.
Hi, Katie, I'm Katie. Thanks for coming.
Look at her, huh? Rainwater.
Um, so a lot of these questions, I'm trying to answer them, but I want to ask, but I will ask them, I don't know, we haven't talked about it yet, which is that, um, so we know that with the new Supreme Court ruling about homelessness and whether or not it can be treated as a criminal offense, essentially, that's the short of it. So I was curious, right, how that it's more actionable in terms of these sections, arrests, if that will have any influence on the decision making, how we handle issues in Salt Lake City. And I think it's all that the commission, because these individuals are disproportionately people power in Salt Lake City. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Katie. It's absolutely relevant. And unfortunately, our attorneys haven't finished reviewing that case, Grants Pass versus Johnson. But unless you have an update today, they haven't finished reviewing it. And I sit on the Utah Homelessness Board, which is the new iteration created from this year's legislation. I know that a lot of those board members are anxious to see what requirements will be in place. And I wonder about punishment essentially that will be probably put into legislation for non-compliance. And so I, I am anxious to hear what our attorneys say about it. And you, in case this question hasn't talked about it, there are, there are two ordinances, two laws in Salt Lake City that have been on books a long time since the sixties, and it's really can't be ordinance. And the can't be, or if it's anyone from building a structure, there is a need to tarred tent, cardboard links, it doesn't matter, but it needs to be basically structured. And then there's a loitering, which means if you're playing on the sidewalk, you're staying put in the public right of way, then that loitering ordinance, I don't know, it's also a very long time. Both misdemeanors, we, we know that when you require a lot of these arrests, it just makes it very, very, even bigger to get into housing. That's why we've been doing things like the kayak court and the pop-up justice court activities. And now we have justice court presence at the jail to try to clear out some outstanding general justice issues. Chief, do you have any update or want to add anything?
No, the mayor's absolutely right. We, we, those laws have been on the books for a long, long time. I think that the concept of, we're really trying to look at is, are we really ever going to arrest our way out of homeless issues? Are we, I mean, where are the beds? Where are the resources? Where's the dream? And that's what the mayor's leadership and it's really paid off, so we try, that conversation's happening now, people are embracing it, because we can take people to jail, we can book them in, in a couple hours, they'll be back out. And the cycle continues and continues. And just by arresting people for and over and over is not really helping anybody. We need to look past that and add other alternatives and other solutions.
I think that the state does get it in a way that they did four or five years ago. And then the sixty million they put in the legislative session for, and way, they're obviously looking desperately for land to make ultra low barrier shelter, possibly eliminate this pop-up annual distribution of winter overflow, which no one thinks is a good idea. Everybody knows that's a waste of dollars and it's more work. Anyway, it's been really very difficult for them to find the space, but at least they're trying. In the meantime, you're right, it's criminalization of homelessness, and there aren't pets available, so.
I just got a quick question. My question is, and I'm sorry I didn't get this to you, I apologize. But my question is, I'm hoping that we can do something before, because what we have is a crisis in foster care, right? We have a huge crisis. And there's not enough emphasis on that. And what we're doing is we're, foster care is a road to president. As, as I look at it, I mean, I've been doing it for thirty-five years, and I see it as, as part of our chronic problem. And I think that we can cut that off before, or come up with some programs that will help these young people as they age out of the foster care system, to be able to find housing, find, you know, be able to find jobs and those things. We can kind of eliminate, you know, black population. I think it's a growing population, I'm not mistaken, actually. Yeah, so it's, it's a significant problem. And it scares me, I mean, because, I mean, I do everything I can to make sure that kids have every opportunity to be successful. And when they age out of the care system, I keep trying my best to keep those kids, to keep touching them so that they, you know, that they have the opportunity of not getting up on that road to president. So I'm just hoping that we can find some way to help eliminate, come up with some programs that can help bridge that gap there, so that we can kind of help, not be a problem.
See, do you mean the gap between twenty eighteen and.
Yes, ma'am.
Really, in Salt Lake?
Yes. Yeah, I think that's, it's really scary point in life right now, because we, we have kids, and right now they don't have homes to house these kids. And we're living, they're living in hotels.
Yeah.
And, you know, there's no, there was a counter, it's, it's really a tough road right now.
Thanks.
And I just hope that we can help, we should have age, those kids that really want out of the system at eighteen, what can you do to, you know, to help them? Either within the housing, you know, in some kind of, you know, some sort of education to foot or, or home, you know, housing that has to, because I don't think a lot of foster homes, I'm not trying to dog anybody, but I don't think there's a lot of top that, you know, what it means to get them, you know, transition to a older, you know, the BCS has their help program, but. I've been doing it too long, so.
Couple of quick thoughts out there. I wonder, and I'll just save this report right now, Chief, and Chief, you can think about, I'm going to talk about this later, but the Explorer Program, I wonder if we could prioritize and target recruitment of, you know, people in foster care in the city to come to be part of the Explorer Program. Second thing that comes to mind is Colony B, which is a housing development right next to the tracks, something Jake's sat on the other side, the white building that was just opened last year. We did, we funded part of that development. It's a variety of affordability in there, but they set aside some number of units, and I don't want to misquote, but there were four young people coming out of foster care. And I believe that they're holding those units, and at the time that they opened, they hadn't, they reached out to the system and they had vacancies in those units. So let me just offer the Colony B apartments, I think could be a good resource for your community to know about. And that we are interested in funding more projects like that that set aside, it's tricky with fair housing, you have to set aside, so it's just to priority access. Anyway, know that we want to be more.
I've never heard that, so it's really good to know that, because then, you know, there's a number of children just aging out and they're just homeless.
Yeah.
And then my kids come to my house in the middle of the street on that back porch. It's a lot of, I see them, they're great. So I'm just going to keep that, thank you so much. I would really appreciate that, it's a good question.
Hi, this is Katie, I'm on, you guys have questions?
I just said I've taken more of your time than I was scheduled to. Thank you for letting me visit. Thank you for showing up and doing this work. Thank you, Police Department, too. Let you have a meeting. Thank you. Also, probably say we're more good by, it's, I'm going to go. The mic was open to you and Michelle and Damien, Maria, they're gone with, I mean, is very short. So please, if you have ideas or your questions you didn't think of, get them to me and I'll get back to you for sure. And I hope that you help us as we get the Olympics on July twenty-fourth, March eighth for twenty thirty-four, that we want. That we want to host the most equitable Olympics possible. What does that even look like? There we go, there's the challenge. Thank you, everybody, always. We truly appreciate being here. So yeah, thank you. So we have a subject list, Chief Brown, what do you think?
Thank you, Chair. Good evening.
Evening, Chair.
We have a slide, you know, we have, we have all the slides. We're pretty much all. Okay, Commissioners, one of my favorite things is to come back and talk to you about some of the things that you've asked us to work on. I'd like to present a little bit about our SRO staff. And look, in 2020, when the world changed there for a little bit, we had COVID, schools closed. We had 10 SROs at the time. We didn't need 10 SROs because there was no school, kids weren't going to school. So, and we had, like the mayor talked about, a lot of people decided leasing wasn't through them. They left their apartment. And we kind of had a staffing crisis coupled with a crime spike. And so we were very busy doing call for call for call, trying to reduce crime within the city. We pulled from our SROs. So we had, at that time, 10. We pulled them down to five for 2020. Then we had a whole bunch of people leave. It was really hard, still came back online and say, hey, we're going to put all these, we need to send officers back. We ran SROs, certified officers for several years, but one of the recommendations was from the commission that they, they really felt like the SROs were important and wanted our DSC department to interface with the use of inner schools. But also to have the training, the very best training we could have. So we added in early 2024, two, as our staffing numbers come on. Just to let you know, our staffing, our authorized staffing is 608. Believe, as you know, we're at 18, we're now 18. That's tremendous for what we work for. So we go two back into the schools, two retired. We go four back, actually. So that's just seven. Recently, a few weeks ago, we had three more. So I'm happy to report that we are back up to our 10 SROs that we had in 2020, plus that sergeant. That's fantastic news. That's a huge accomplishment. Thank you for your support on that. Next slide. This is really one of the show you have to talk about. Oh, yes, Chief.
How do we train these guys to get an opportunity and allow to assess, you know, children at risk?
You're right, you're, you're attractive. You're a slot. One of the commissions asked was to seek out or orchestrate, you know, not just put one or two, you're going to put 10 police officers in schools, have them all trained. So the National School Resource Officer Association, known as NASRO, teaches a basic SRO course. I'm happy to report that all 10 will be basic certified training at the start of the 2024, 2025 school year. Seven of those have completed the advanced SRO course. Two have completed the NASRO's Atlas of Mental Health Training Course. They will bring back everything they've learned in train-to-train type of capacity and teach everybody. And then, not to stop there, the unit commander or lieutenant and the sergeant have completed SRO Supervisors and Management Course through NASRO. So we've worked very hard, Commissioner, and I appreciate the question and we appreciate the challenge. It's taken us a while to get there, but I'm really happy to be here today and study. I think we're there. We're not done. You know, we will have this next year when they bring the NASRO training in the starting time when the schools are out. We will send officers back and try to have them attend whatever discipline that we haven't accomplished and then train them up to a higher level, but also keep everybody trained to the very basics. Next slide. This is my, you know, the next slide. I just wanted to ask what's the status of the new. The new is not. It's a big challenge. Yeah, that's a big threat. I think we're going to complete here now. Okay, so your, your goals for 2023 is to continue working on outstanding goals and priorities. We're doing that. Big chat on additional professional development opportunities for the SROs. And then another one is, shall we ask for and receive $20,000 to be added to the Salt Lake City PB budget. So it's funded for culturally responsive therapy for victims of families impacted by negative interactions. So it's my budget will be, will be controlled, it's a budget that we ask for and is available. So I'm happy to report those are three big chats right there. Any questions?
Sorry. That's really, thank you. That is wonderful this year. Yeah.
So. Yeah, thank you. We appreciate it. And it's, you're working together, we've accomplished it, so thank you. And that's all I have for my update today. I didn't, you know, I don't know, maybe we all should. Yeah, I think it would be.
If you have a question, I certainly did. I think we've talked a lot about, I don't know, leaning to the mic, but I did have a similar question. It was more appropriate for you than for the mayor. Specifically, I know that the department has a really emphasis on diversity recruitment over the last few years, but trying to get women, people of color, marginalized communities, recruitment. With the new rules being handed out by the legislature, how does that have any impact on the police department's ability to recruit in those categories?
Commissioner, I think you're talking about House Bill 261, which is in my head. There's a lot in there, but I'm happy to report that I don't think it will have any impact on our recruitment. The things that it strikes for, you know, puts it to the last ocean, we don't do anyway. I think, I'll tell you what, but this is my task. When you come back and do some, some stats on our recruitment. Because we have, over the last few years, we've become very diverse in our recruitment, both by ethnicity background and by gender. We recruit very heavily, and the mayor, that's just one, Explorer Program, Commissioner, this is what you're talking about. Maybe we look for some of the opportunities for, for kids that age out of foster communities. Because kids, I mean, kids want to grow, and they're going to find a place to belong, whether it's for the homeless or that. So they do, and we have an Explorer Program that starts at age 14 and age 21. It is, when you look at the kids in our Explorer Program, they are the most diverse community in the department by ethnicity, race, and gender. And they come from all corners of our community. And we have used that as a recruitment tool when we're hiring these kids, we charge these. So, yeah, so I'd like to talk to you more about that. So I will come back with some stats to show you. But partly, yeah, we will, we will from some of our, our, we should have, I mean, I would say, hey, I want to be part of the solution, I want to be part of the answer, and that's what my name is, and I'm not going to be like this.
My next question to you is, I understand that you're, that you're really hard on recruitment and maybe you're a little bit more diversified. So where does that diversification fall? Does it fall at the ground levels? How much recruitment are you doing to get it up into the higher levels of the police department? I mean, I'm really curious because when I look at Utah as a state as a whole, when you look at, I look at departments all the time and see that diversity is not there, or not about diversity, but we really honor diversity. And I mean, I'm not saying diversity is just because it's a black or white or color or whatever. Diversity is about people who may not look the same as me, who may, you know, who may have tattoos, who may have hair piercings, who may be, you know, who may not, just make the world a little different. But, I mean, I'm kind of curious to know how are moving the legal forward to grow it not just around the full of this, of the badge?
Yeah, that's a great, I mean, we've worked very hard on that. I mean, we, under my tenure as chief, we have relaxed our, our, our air standards, allowing officers to grow beard. Everybody loves it, and I'm just telling you, this is what you should love, beers. The other thing they love is tattoos. Yeah, so we relaxed that, I mean, given that they're, you know, they're successful. Yeah, we're a lot stupid. But it also comes down to the diversity of thought and how people think, right? If you only promote from what in your organization, your recital of what you think about requisites. Under my tenure, I have promoted from an out, from an outside, or an outside police department. And Andrew, Chief, and I'd write is, is the example of that. I had an opening today with the chief. I interviewed internal, the internal external, and he came down Southern County and he did a fantastic job. And he got the job. He's the best person to go with. I'll let Andrew talk a little bit about his background, it'll be great to the table.
Yeah, I've been here a year and a half. My great grandfather was a Salt Lake City police officer back in the 30s, retired in 67. My family grew up here in Salt Lake City. I personally was born and raised up in Heber and started my career in corrections, went down on patrol. Eventually moved to Summit County employment-wise. In fact, when I started at Summit County, I purchased my first home in Salt Lake City on 1,000 Bus Street across from the State Fair Park. I lived there for six and a half years, sold that house, moved to Landell. Lived there for six, six years. I now currently reside in Tabor's Brook. I'm also very proud to say that I am one of the few members of the police department that is openly gay. I think that's a big deal in policing. It's not easy. I can, I can tell you stories, we don't have time tonight. I can tell you stories of the things I've experienced to the point of waking up in tears, wondering why I'm in this profession. Because, as we all know, it's a very vast field of mostly white profession. And here in Salt Lake City, Chief Brown, which is as he's described, I'm now over recruitment for the department. We are, we are, we want the department to match the community. And that includes everything that we've been talking about. So I'm excited to be here. I've loved the year and a half so far that I've been here. I feel like, you know, by different viewpoints, I've been, I've been able, Chief has supported me and let me put a lot of those things into motion and to change some mindsets and some cultural type things within the police department. And we have, and we're going to continue to do that. We're going to continue to work on that.
And I feel that culture is extremely hard to change. And as I'm going into meeting tomorrow with the upper level management of the HHS, DCIS, because I'm really pushing them to become more accountable, more diversified in what they do. Because I think the obligation that comes into there is a diverse of our population. And I don't know how to look at it. I mean, queer, you know, gay, black, white, Hispanic, or, you know, doesn't matter. I mean, I had every, almost every reason I had to, but I didn't care of it, so I understand it. And I see the challenges that it is facing, the challenges, and they don't see it. They don't say, well, I can't accomplish that. I can't become that because I don't, I don't, because it's not there, I can't see it. And I think the more that, I think on the ground level, the ground rules level, the more that we can show these young people and people that diversity is important to us as a community, then I think the more that they'll look and strive to grow to be.
Yeah. So, Commissioner, I think we're diversified from the ground up and from the top down. Chief Brown has done a fantastic job. Remember when we had all the elk coming down from Summit County a year ago, hundreds of them? They were, that was, they were welcoming Chief Brown down. Saying hello.
They were screaming.
And around them, sending them back. So, next question.
So Chief, from the West End Coalition and the Human Rights Commission, I read through that all the legislation from the last state session. So they all kind of blur together a little bit, but there were several anti-PEI bills. And the gist of most of them seemed to be not just gay words, but trying to prevent things like diversity recruitment. So my recommendation would be we stop using the word diversity and we start this, and if you put this up, like, can you, you represent agents or something like that? Because they'll, they'll zero in, the legislature will zero in if you're talking about diversity recruitment and you might deal with challenges a lot next session.
Anybody else have questions? Anybody online? Well, thank you, Chief Brown, for doing that. I appreciate it. Thank you for coming here. And welcome. Together we have been helped. Yeah, that's great. I should, you could go. I'm listening to you, I guess. Sorry.
Cheers, I go. I know.
No, I'm just kidding. I mean, you know. We have a quarantine. What, what was your?
Yeah, I just had to. I just had to specify that.
All right, Commissioners, thank you. It's good to see you all. And it's so nice to see you, my person.
But this, Chief, this is a great commission, and they are very helpful.
Yeah, that's nice. So, as I always say, we won't see you for a month. Do we skip one, right? But if you need anything, if you want to, anything, if you have any questions, please, you know, as you can help me, we respond as quick as we can.
I'm going to see you next month.
I know.
I appreciate it, Eric.
Our next item is upcoming, upcoming items is a brief recap of the retreat and annual review report. But I'd like to add to that, I think what we should tackle first really is the main change of our commission. What?
Yeah. So if I didn't prepare everyone, like, if everyone's ready to make a decision, but I didn't, you guys know. about the name change and that you all will be okay. So I will ask, I will ask you another time, especially because it's not on the agenda. Here's I like to post the agenda, and the name change is not on here.
I mean, just a quick question, are we supposed to submit name change ideas before we put it on the agenda?
The reason why I don't think we're fully prepared is that everybody goes after retreat. Two, you all have to come to a consensus. And three, you only have like twenty minutes or less. And three, I want you guys to make it affordable. This is how I look to everything, just like with the training, because you guys have enough in advance to vote on these things. Yes, it has to be changed per the legislature, but this is a policy of ours and it's not going to change tomorrow when we go today. But like, this is things that are in code in policy, that it has to go through a turn at least. And we have to kind of go through that process as well, so.
So my understanding is that we can discuss it, but we can't call and vote it without the public notice?
Yes, and it's not on the agenda at all. Like, I didn't understand that, so this already cannot be the public. So I.
I agree with you, so we can take, but we can think about what those names, what we should change the names to.
Can I work with it for the modification to that? That you can, we take the conversation online via email?
That's fine.
Yeah, I'll do that again.
I won't confer that much of that with the interns. But yes, I will confer on the name change. I'm on topic, so you all don't worry. Just think of what word you all want. After you're ready, because I'm going to prepare my name all. Um, I think she's the force, you guys keep her still, and it's a better leadership class. So think of a word change for equity. And then we will vote to the item, item number seven. So I did want to give a recap of the commission retreat. If you have not read my email and seen those notes and minutes from that retreat, we go ahead and review them. Um, also, there is a survey in there that I would like you guys all to fill out. Um, so that I can get the best availability for all of the working groups, and that's all linked in also.
So, can I propose that? So next, can we have a meeting next month just to do the survey? Work on survey here?
Surveying. So that's, I'm trying to get everybody's availability, that whether it's a personal or a work.
Yeah, depending where it to do that. I would like to have a meeting, because actually, I, you know, I started thinking about it. And I figured, I'm like, well, you think we should be on survey? I think this way it's important to me, because we all have different backgrounds, we have different opinions. So, um, I would like to do that for next month. All right, well.
The, 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 actually, I guess, I will talk about that. Like, it's not going to be just the committee. So let me just probably preface this. Just because you're in a certain working group, anything that is going under this commission needs to be supported by everybody. So it's not like a subgroup is working in secret. It's just every time we have a forum, it has to be an open debate meeting. So that's why we do smaller groups, because then we can meet that way more effectively. I think I've said this many times, this hour and a half is not a working meeting. This is to handle the business we need to do on our quarterly meeting to the public by the open and public meeting guidelines. So we will have Jason come to our next meeting in September to refresh that all with you guys. And then the commission department will have a number again, um, as well, so. Yes, what you're saying is, like, the survey won't just be published next month. And also, we're trying to hire other department. Like, it won't just be like, Commissioner, about the questions that we're going to actually have. Like, that's how it has to be, through a third party. So I would provide specifics on the working groups. What we need to do is have a date and time for the members. Because without a date and a time, and then we can draw our leads, um. So, yes, that's my idea.
But I understand, we believe that meeting here, it has to be on staff.
No. If we do any meeting that has to are, so that's eight people, fifteen by by two plus one, has to be an open debate meeting.
Right.
Yes. Yes.
But if you have seven, it's a meeting for a meeting.
It's going to be a meeting. That is just a bit, I, I have set that out. I think it might have been in the onboarding, um, but Jason is coming. It is an annual requirement for all of you guys to know, actually, so please do not miss that September meeting. Um, because it is very important for you all to know this as well. That's what you kind of sign here.
I hope we do. Ju- just to add to that, I think what Commissioner Tanja is asking is to go ahead and get something on the books next month so we can have a board meeting. But what Michelle was saying is that she sent out a group of forums asking people for their availability. It does sound like feedback, but that kid.
From everybody, yes.
Okay, so if anybody's going to do stuff about their availability, she will get something off the calendar for next month, and I'll be glad to be there.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Okay. And just, I know I tried to keep them in emails to a mental, and I tried to text you all my internal emails as well. But email should be titled something along lines of Commissioner, should we follow the email? So if you're ever trying to search for a email for me, I try to name it as very simple and as related. It's not ever going to be like something outrageous, and then you're trying to look for an email. So please review that email, it's a Google form. So maybe availability, and I hope it's not only happening next month, but for the working groups that have kind of a sense of that line, I would like a meeting before the end of this one as well. As all of them, yes.
I would be available by, by Zoom, because I'm going to be out of town on the twenty-seventh. I mean, the twentieth and the twenty-seventh, the twenty-ninth.
So once I see everyone's availability, so note that, and then I need to gather everybody's availability. There's fifteen of you, I sent one of these, so I need to do all of that. Oh, you stress out the availability? Stress, so I have that one, so I have it. Okay, then, then over there. Um, this is important because by September meeting, I will have a draft of the review report for you guys. It'll look similar to the ones we had years past, but both of our reports comes from you guys. So these are recommendations, and I, I kind of want to explain the recommendations piece. Because if we're working on a recommendation, we have to, one, make sure it's something that we, we can do and we have control over. Um, for example, I know the process is very, very important, but it's, it's hard to, um, kind of regularly, again, a department that's not S O C P D E, and as you guys are able to meet. So we've agreed that we might not be under their grant. If I said that correctly, but yes.
You want to put a talk about.
There might not be S O C P D E law. So we have to consider these recommendations. While we want to try and take the role of everything going on in Utah, this is just Salt Lake City racial equity and policing commission. So just so you all will put a lot of effort and time, like, I really want to save your guys' time. I want to make sure that these recommendations are clear of what you're recommending. So please look at the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three reports or who's recommendations are coming in. Look through the shorter reports, and you can kind of give an example of what a recommendation looks like. I'll be in the meetings with you guys. So if you have something that you think you might want to recommend, come to me for feedback, because again, I want to save you all the time of writing this in the report with research and notes if it's not something that we have jurisdiction over. Um, but that's not to, um, I guess, this is empowering, guys, because you, there is a lot of things we can do, it just has to be within the department. Like, the recommendation sheet presented on today, that was just added on last year, and it's already done, and it's the seventh month of the year. So that's pretty impressive compared to things that took years to complete. Um, and clearly, some recommendations are very already larger than others. So just keep that in mind. So does anybody have questions in terms of the annual review report? You know, also have the accomplishments of the department. So all of these checkboxes, I know I feel like, oh, what can we really do this year? We've done a lot, and that's the kinds of things that I'm tracking. And then I'll present that as a draft, and then we will be voting in November on the report as it. Um.
I know one of our goals was to participate more in the community outreach, um, groups, but they're really not up and running. So how do we work that into the end of year report? Because it's not us not participating, it's that those meetings aren't being held.
Um, you, I, you said I could see this. So how I, I'm good with the words, like, you still have a certain, like, if Commissioner attended, I don't think I was really, like, even if it's just Latino Polish now, yeah, but. I think my, the best that I tried to add is even a small change, a small difference, is an accomplishment. In, in government, where things slow, we have to celebrate the small achievements. So having commissioners attend the Latino Polish, which is just one, um, aspect of the community meetings, is still a good, I guess, accomplishment. In terms of next year, maybe a recommendation might be for the commission to work closely with S O C P D E to help them bring these meetings to life. That might be a good idea, because you guys seen it this year, that, okay, only one is active, or more active than others.
Well, it's good, one at the same time, we feel we won our roles. It's kind of what it was feeling, but we can spend it in a way, or maybe positive.
Yes, and you would see on the report as well that I do say complete, um, or continue goals from the previous year. So it's never a failure on the commission. And on the report, it's written in a positive way, so it's all that you accomplished in here, not what's missing or, and it does go with ongoing in progress, and incomplete, and incomplete doesn't mean we're not good. Um, Commissioner, water.
Sorry, I had an issue there with my mute. Um, I was just wondering, um, I, I missed yesterday's for the Latino commissioner, commissioner. But, um, I was wondering, they don't have those meetings on Zoom, do you? Do you know, and if that's something that, you know, with officers or the chief can maybe initiate, that maybe more people would attend?
It is not being offered via Zoom, but we can take that question back and see what options are regarding that.
Yeah, be interested to see, maybe, you had mentioned prior, um, that maybe other groups have not been so active, and so maybe that would be some other option to consider more participation in.
Okay, thank you, and we will, yeah, we will have to just ask them. Um, I know it's just, what I've realized too is, prior to us leaving to a five-monthly meeting, um, the commissions would never be in July and December. But because of five-monthly, that's why we're here, because a lot of people have traveled and things like that. So I happen to listen deeply in meetings if they happen in the summer months as well. So we can definitely pitch that idea, um, if you want to pass it up or if we're posting on that, that's fine. So thank you for your comment. That is it for my debate. If someone else has any question, I'll pass the floor to Commissioner Chair.
Well, thank you, Michelle, for that debate. Um, and it was Michelle and the commission. And so we are a racial community commission. I was busy for a while. Um, I think we should step outside our box and also be equity, like, really include everybody. Um, I think it's really important, especially with this commission, and we have Harris back, back and the chiefs. So, um, while we're trying to schedule for next month, you know, I think that should be included in our survey. Um, so think about that, and please tell me how you feel about that. Because it's really important to me that means that everybody is not person, I mean, this is actually for everyone. Okay, that's all I have. And here, now, next.
Wait, sorry, are you asking for it to be?
So, well, 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 maybe think about it and we'll do it in our survey and discuss it next month.
The survey in terms of what the five-five survey? Or what, what are you asking, to change the name, like, outside of that, or just to?
Oh, we can change your name, obviously. So since we have equity and we are, we're a racial community, it's, step aside, step aside a lot. And not just leave that waste, or be not everybody else, include everybody else.
Talking, I'm trying to emphasize equity is not just race.
That's what, yes.
Right. So, what a comment on that. So, I think, like, this is just my experience working in this bill of work, right? Like, race is never going to trump anything else. Like, there's intersections, like, I, when you look at somebody, you're not going to just see that there is one person. Race is just that physical thing that you see. You don't know if you're looking at somebody and they're being, um, treated unfairly, based on their race, their disability, that may be invisible, visible, like, you never know what you're being, because all of that is like, you can't vis, like, they're tied, like, I'm just a black woman or a cis, or we're not really in an intersection right there, being black and white. So it never, just because this commission was founded on something specific does not mean we don't explore other issues, because you can see in the, um, the recommendations in the past, it's always been, like, nothing's been very, like, race-related or race duty targeted. But the mission and purpose of this commission has been, because that is a topic that's not really there. And we also have our Human Rights Commission that focuses on every single different topic. Um, and the racial equity and policing commission does actually, um, so accessibility and disability commission and this commission actually do, like, report to the Human Rights Commission, who can also focus on different issues as well. So you're trying to do this with a full understanding, neither these little specific issues, just like, oh, we have the A D C. I, I'm sure their focus is on disability, I'm sure they're going to meet with intersection as well, so. I don't want, I guess I don't want the mindset to be like, okay, we only deal with races, because it's, I don't see that yet.
I think maybe the public sees that, you know, they may have perception and it's still base. So I just want to make sure the public knew and our issues knew.
Okay.
Maybe it's not racial, you know, so like, oh, this, you know, focus on race.
Yeah, I hear you. I guess it wouldn't be the same argument for disability, like, it's just disability. But I think intersection is like, well, I think it's just, I know you're, you're tracking with the wrong models as one thing, like, or motif, I have mentioned all motif, I said it.
Yeah, it's, it's just actually community, so.
Yes, and I think it is very honorable, it's like, all of that is.
I think that's a very spend week to much time, making, uh, debating word choice, trying to describe ourselves. Let's just give you, get hard work done and show what we do.
Please, please.
And, 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 it's.
No, I think we have to, no, please, yes. We've talked about that, no, and we're going to start from J C track, yeah.
Just get frustrated, we have to change your name in the first place. That's less than all our time and energy focused on that.
Come on, right, it's ridiculous, okay. Oh, um, do we have anything to discuss for a close session?
Is the close session, what, you said tentative, is it maybe before the end of?
That's just, if you don't, if we're closed.
Oh, okay.
I share this criteria for when you can, you can put, I, I think eight years are being involved in commissions and that is a close session.
Okay.
Oh, I have, yeah.
Yeah, it's also.
No, that's a close session. Um, um, so our next meeting, that brings us to our next meeting, which is September as well. Uh, and the lawyer over here, Rachel?
I'll, yes, I'll confirm the event again.
Okay. And you see there, then, you say, I'll see you next month too. That our official meeting is September. And I'm going to leave the closing this meeting, please.
I make a motion that we adjourn until, uh, for this week until September twelve.
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I, I make a motion.
Oh, that's right, excuse me.
I'm sorry. Alright. So then you say that there's a motion and seconds on the floor, on paper.
There's motion, second is on the floor, on paper. Do you oppose? Do you abstain? Abstain.
Yeah, so the chair rules the motions passed.
What?
Chair rules the motions passed. We are.
Alright, the chair rules that has passed and we are adjourned. So you will enjoy our henry six three orders.
And you see the time.
Oh, and the time is, um, officially seven oh three. So yes, it's going to be bloody, bloody afternoon outside.
Thank you, Commissioner Goblin.